So with the new agreement, they've requested an additional one million upfront. There's reasons for that. And then we have a defined dollar amount to pay ourselves back starting in the 2026 increment to ensure that we receive that money. If there is any remaining qualifying expenses, they will go to the developer for qualified expenses. And you've all seen the projections, so you understand that. If you have questions, feel free to ask. The qualifying increment to the developer will be 100%. If you recall, for those who were here in 2021, we had a matrix that basically told the developer that if they brought in a prime defense contractor, they would receive 100% of the tax increment. And so that just follows through with that promise in the original agreement. And this also fulfills an obligation in the option agreement. So if this is approved, it'll be recorded and they'll be able to purchase the option agreement from the agency. This increases the amount of land from 55 to 90 acres. So really, that's all I have. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
You guys have any questions? I know there's a lot of information there to go over. Basically, we're honoring the same contract, is what it boils down to.
Correct. And we're adding the property that wasn't in the original agreement. These properties right here, the upfront has increased by a million dollars.
Did they say what they're gonna do with the new property?
They generally have. It's wasn't we known yet, so I can't say. But we don't know for sure. They don't have, they have an idea, but they don't know for sure. They haven't, they don't have a contract ready.
Right.
Well, I have to say, without this deal, I don't know that this area would have developed into what we wanted to, at least. So me, they've been a great partner and, you know, seeing the vision of what this area was meant to be from councils 15 years, 15 or more years ago. So I think it's great, and I don't have a problem with them at all.
Their intent is to continue what they're working on, so.
Yeah.
If I put lemonade stand up there, will I get in trouble? It might help.
You can do a food correction.
No.
Lemonade, lemonade stand and food correction.
Yeah, lemonade.
Okay. Any other questions, Ann?
That's great. No, it's a great thing. They're adding on to it. That's positive.
More jobs, more.
Yeah, more everything. So that's great.
One of the things we mentioned before, I think, sort of talked about was that the current tenant there obviously had a large footprint all across the country and beyond. And one of the things that seems to be occurring is that there's a lot of interest from divisions or projects in that same company that are other places that this site is becoming a really attracting option for a lot of them. Does that make sense? They're hearing about it, how it's being developed, and approximated the base and the view and the corporation and so forth, that there's even seems to be some competition within the corporation of who gets to come to the place to Eastgate. And that's fantastic. They want to be here.
It's a great thing.
As long as we don't know exactly who they are, but it's clear that that's taking place. And that's very positive.
We just gotta get some food around. So now we just gotta get some food around.
I'm sure there will.
So we aren't going to Riverdale. Or a road extension. Yeah. Well, if there's no more discussion, then I'd entertain some action on the resolution 25-05.
Make a motion that we accept whatever you just said. I can't see it up there. On the resolution 25-05.
Second.
It's been moved in second. So all in favor, say aye. Aye. And we close. Thank you. Thank you, Juan. That was good. Okay, that was our last item of our redevelopment agency meeting, so I need a motion to come out of that meeting and go into our regular scheduled work meeting.
So moved?
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. And give Kim a minute to reset up. Okay, good. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone then into our regularly scheduled work meeting for November 5th, uh, 6th, excuse me. Our start time on this meeting is 5:40 into our RDA meeting. So as for the agenda, we'll go ahead and start out with the reports that all of us give and all first on the agenda as far as the mayor's report. So I know last time I hadn't had, well, since we met last time, the only major board meeting that I've been on is one with Wausatch integration. So there's several things that we discussed up there, even though we were able to do all of this within a 45-minute meeting, which was kind of very different from the way the previous administration had handled the meetings. So the biggest thing that I want you to know about is they're doing a charger yard, which is from the Division of Air Quality. So if you remember, I think about two years ago, they had, there was an incentive for people turning in their gas-powered lawnmowers for battery-powered lawnmowers. So now, the air quality controllers come to them and said, okay, look, that was highly successful, we want to do it again, but this time we want to include the lawnmowers, blowers, trimmers, anything that's gas-powered, if they can, if people are willing to go to the electric, what am I trying to say? Tools. Then, and they apply for the incentive through the air quality control, then they want to make sure that Wausatch would be willing to take the gas-powered items and be able to recycle them. So I'm just letting you guys know that upfront, so that you're aware of it. They're gonna have two, actually, two different versions of this. They're gonna have a commercial for all the commercial businesses and then also for residential. The commercial side is going to be February and March of 2026. Then the residential side will start in March and go through the end of April. Then also, there was a evaluation done on the MRF up there, and it was an outside source that comes in and they, you know, they do evaluations on all kinds of recycling centers. And this one up here passed all the types of material that came in. They passed a number one and a number two type recovery. And interesting enough, compared to the national, they were at an 8% non-burnable. In other words, when they go through and do their assessment, that only 8% of the waste that was collected was not being able to be recycled, which was extremely low compared to any national facility. So that's a good thing that they've got the, you know, the operating appropriately up there on what the intent is. Going into the winter time, the hours have changed. The hours of service that they'll be open would be 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And here's an interesting fact, because I know so many people were like, oh, you know, worried about the out-of-district cost. So the whole purpose of that, the reason why that was implemented was because they were receiving so much of out-of-district waste from everywhere else, because they were kind of like on the low, low end of it. So that price got bumped up to $50 a ton. Well, it's doing its job, because now the amount of outside waste coming to this facility has dropped significantly. Before, they were averaging at least 35 to 37 tons a month, and now it's dropped down to 24. So I think that was a good move there, and then it's paying off. Another thing that I want you to be aware of is, you know, they had their incentive program that they tried to, you know, that we got the option for. And part of that, we could have done a green, green waste part of it. Interesting enough, Clearfield implemented a green waste. Farmington is now wanting to do a green waste. Between those two cities, there's no more capacity up there for any, any other city to really participate in that. So that's a new challenge that they have, that they're gonna have to solve, so just be aware of that.
Sorry. When they're at capacity, do they still take residential green waste?
Yeah.
As in, if sewer districts shut down, they don't take too much?
Yeah. No, they'll, they'll still do the, you know, the drive-in from the residents, but, you know, as far as qualifiers, I guess is what I should say. They'll be at that capacity on that one. And then, starting for 2026, there's a new executive board that will go into place. So the chair and vice chair, due to a resolution that was passed last year. Yeah. I guess the year before that. The chair and vice chair are not quite able to stay, to remain on, so they'll be rotating off. And this upcoming year, the new chair will be Mike Newton. He's the county commissioner for Morgan County. And then the vice chair is Rod Westbrook. He's from South Weaver, mayor of South Weaver. And then Tammy Tran will be the secretary of Caseville. And then, this was an interesting announcement as well that I know you guys would be interested in, is their attorney, Larry, that we've been dealing with over the years, he actually made an announcement that he's gonna be leaving. So he's actually given him a six-month notice, but he'll be stepping down as well. So it was, it was a pretty robust meeting. I mean, like I said.
Can we send him a I love Lakeville t-shirt? Just wondering.
Only if you all sign it.
I'll sign it.
Okay, so anyway, that was my update on that meeting. Next week, I have, you know, the sewer board, but the only other thing I want to mention is November 21st, well, you guys are aware that the National League of Cities in Town is coming to Salt Lake, they're having their convention this year. And they are asking that on the 21st, that all the cities of the first and second class attend a meeting that starts at 2:00 to 3:45. We will have to pre-register, so it's gonna be held down at the High Regency in Salt Lake. So if you can, please, yeah, please let Angela know tomorrow if you can, because she's gonna be out for a month starting next week, so she wants to get us pre-registered for that if you're all able to. And certainly, if you want to attend any of that, any of that conference, just let us know. So that's all my updates. So I'll turn the time over to you guys.
Chambers Legislative, the bears met this morning, and we had a couple visitors from the legislature, Melissa Ballard and Representative Cutler. And three things Representative Cutler talked about, his priorities. I thought it was interesting, digital ID, he's working on the challenges of that, trying to work with neighboring states to try and make it congruent and work together. So one challenge he's working on. Another, signature gathering and trying to set up some kind of training for signature gathers for petitions or referendums, so that minimize fraud. One thing they, one problem they had last go-around was students learned, oh, we can make extra money collecting signatures, while there was not, you know, being fraudulent on purpose, but maybe trying to make more, or make more money. Not trying to sway the petition, I mean, they were fraudulent on purpose, but not trying to sway the petition, the referendum, but just best practices that they're trying to put together, a program for signature gathers. And that'll, that'll apply to companies that do it professionally as well as volunteers. And the third thing was e-motocycles, e-motocycles that the state is talking about, how we can, what the best avenue is to protect our residents, to protect our streets.
Sidewalks?
Baseball fields.
Correct.
But yeah. And I, I told him, you know, it'd be nice, because we've seen some cities come up with ordinances and rules, if you will, and then it's gonna, it would be challenging if every city did that on their own and you have a patchwork. I'm assuming, I didn't, I haven't talked to our chief, but they are working with chiefs of police to try and do what's best. What he kind of suggested was the state has a, an ideal, and that the city can go beyond that. You know, that'll be something to watch this year, you know, we've talked about a lot. And also, we've talked about mosquito abatement, tax increase, proposed tax increase. That hearing again is December 11th, 7:00 PM at the district's office, just off 200 North in Caseville.
And that increase is like $7 per year, if I remember.
On average, yeah. 25% increase, but they are the smallest tax, taxing entity in the county.
Get a guarantee less mosquitoes?
And if they did nothing, I guess. Get that guaranteed.
We'd be down at the library right now with the, the other 30% increase.
I never say it. Done ours, not today.
I know.
I mean, we like to be first, but when it conflicts with our meetings.
Meeting, yeah. I think they're gonna run out of space for the panels. Anyway, okay. Anyone else have any updates? Not a.
Really quick, with the Utah League, with the NLC meetings, there's a Utah State night, so all municipal officials from the state, municipal officials, they're at the Museum of Illusions in the Gateway at 6:00 PM on the 21st. So you and your family are invited to be there.
Museum of Public Illusions?
Of Illusions in the Gateway.
Never been there.
It's just open.
I would want to date this, it's on. Okay. If there's no other reports, then we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Weston to go through the municipal call, the change, the re-change.
Yes.
Take it in, take it out?
Yep, absolutely. So although it might seem there's a lot here, there's, there's not a lot that we're doing different. So legislative bill, Senate bill 104, passed in 2025, and what it did was amend terminology and procedures for lawline adjustments. Now there's three specific terms they're calling them. Procedurally, it doesn't really affect how we do things. There is a modification that staff's recommending, and I'll go through that as well, that does make a modification. And they're also, in this ordinance, recommending that the standards in the Engineering's Development Guidelines and Design Standards be removed that cover lawline adjustments, so we just have them in one place. So the, the three different groups are boundary establishments. This is a boundary line that is ambiguous and uncertain between two property owners. Maybe even the property line is, there's a dispute between where the property line is. The state has come in and said, this is not the city's place to get involved with that. We weren't getting involved with those anyway. It's between the property owners to figure out where that property line is and go get it recorded at the county. This is happening on parcels, not lots, right? When they're, when they're established lots, then we know where those property lines are. The next group, I should go down to here. This is our chart, kind of hard to read, but this is in our, a chart, our table that's in our code that references the Land Use Authority and the reviewing bodies of each of these groups. We didn't put boundary establishments in here, because again, we're not reviewing them. The next group is the simple boundary adjustments, which is the one on the bottom here, and it's listed as having the review body as development staff, recommending body development staff, and the Land Use Authority, the Community Economic Development Department Director. So this is how we're already operating. This, what, what you're gonna see here is, whether it's within a subdivision or outside a subdivision, a known property line is being adjusted. If public utility easements are not affected, meaning we're not having to vacate and re-establish new easements, this is all a process that is handled administratively and approved through staff and taken to the city, the county for recreation. The next group is the full boundary adjustments. So this is what the council sees frequently, which is, what happens here is, in, within a subdivision, we get someone that wants to change a boundary line, and easements have to be vacated and re-established. And our current process is, that then comes to the council to remove those, to vacate those easements. And then they're established again as they're recorded with the new property lines. So again, this is the state calling these specific terms, and so we're just meeting what, as we were looking at this, this one right here, vacating and amending plaques, which is, we have one tonight. And what we're talking about here is really just making the process similar to how we're doing it. When we're amending a plaque, what we're really doing is creating a, somewhat of a preliminary and final plaque, all, all over again. When we do a preliminary plaque, that's when we're establishing boundary lines and establishing those public utility easements. And then the final plaque is the process to get those finally recorded, right? And so in looking at these, and this is why we put this in here, we recognize that this process is already established and reviewed and approved through the planning commission. And so just for purposes of matching our, our same processes everywhere, staff's recommending we make that change, so the city council doesn't have to, to review those. Again, these are administrative processes, so. And then, again, just the last kind of component is just that we are removing the section from the Engineering Development Guidelines standards, we're not adding anything, it's just repealing that section. Be happy to answer any questions.
So this was you, the staff, finding this, not the state mandated?
That's right.
Good job.
Sounds good. A quick bit like that is a lot easier to understand.
Yeah.
Dave, you've seen your last amendment of the plan.
Oh, man.
No, well, after tonight.
After tonight.
If this is approved.
Right, right. Dave's gonna lead the charge.
Well, that's true.
I want these to be.
Got many ideas and ambitions.
More plaques.
And vacation.
Hey, just in general, we're making a big change that was, part of this is required by the legislative action. Does that make you nervous right before the legislative session? When I came on here, I was surprised how much of this you have to do every single year.
Yeah, this one doesn't. There's plenty that does, but we're already doing all these things, so.
Well, that's true. A lot of the things you, a lot of the changes you make, you're saying are already within the bracket.
Well, that's, obviously, speed up things as well.
It will. Yep.
That's a good thing, that's what everybody wants.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
No other questions, so good job, Weston. Okay, we'll turn the time over to Steve Jackson then, to go over the water master plan. Wastewater, excuse me.
We're talking wastewater.
Excuse me, I need to correct myself, I caught it.
We're talking about dirty water.
Yeah.
There we go. How's that?
Some cake in it. Wastewater. Do in the wastewater. Do in the wastewater.
Well, thanks for letting me come back with this tonight. So last year, we actually approved the wastewater master plan along with our sanitary sewer management plan. Part of that process is Bowden Collins finished that up for us in June of '24. Obviously, I'll talk about the wastewater master plan so that we can understand what this next process was, but it recommended improvements to resolve existing and projected future deficiencies based on our current general plan. And then there's a recommendation to evaluate potential sewer impact fees to assist in funding growth-related projects within the city. Historically, we haven't had an impact fee, because the majority of the city-owned sewer system has been constructed by development, and it's been minimum eight-inch pipes, and so there hasn't been a need for that. The majority of the impact fees that have been assessed have been through North Davis Sewer District, where they build the large trunk lines and the conveyance lines that carry it all out to the sewer treatment plant. So as we looked into this master plan, just to review with you, we have just over 218 miles of pipe ranging anywhere from eight to 18 inches in diameter. These large, kind of brighter colors are the North Davis Sewer District trunk lines that you can see, and those are the ones that the majority have been constructed by them, and so they have collected impact fees in the past. The existing conditions that we went through with this wastewater master plan show, show kind of our densities that we were currently at, and then projected densities here. They've gone through all the math and all the studies on that to show that the ERU, they call it the equivalent residential unit, we're currently at about 32,000, they project it will be at about 60,000 by 2060. So we're gonna see some growth over the next, you know, couple decades, but as part of that future growth, they, they came up with projected system improvements. This is in the wastewater master plan as well. They've identified these different projects that we're going to need to do anywhere from now out into that build-out 50-year timeframe that they look at. So there were four, four projects that were in the short term, and then we had a lot more in the long term. So again, the recommendation was to look at the potential for sewer impact fees. So we're bringing this back to you to say we've done the impact fee facilities plan and the impact fee analysis, and we recommend that, we talk about this and kind of plan a path forward if it's something that you, you all want to explore and possibly adopt. So the sewer impact fee facilities plan, similar to our transportation master plan we just went through, there's three components to that. This is the second component of what the wastewater management plan, the master plan would be. Again, it identifies needs for future development or anticipated development. It only includes the growth-related projects, so we backed out any deficiencies that are in the system that we would need to, to take care of. It complies with the Impact Fee Act from Utah Code, based on this wastewater master plan. And again, it's on the next 10 years of capital improvements, no operations and maintenance costs, it's only the growth-related projects, so through 2034. And then it defines a level of service, which is the maximum ratio of flow to pipeline capacity of .75 or 75%. So pretty standard stuff, that's what we've been operating at for decades with our system, and we continue to plan to do that. So again, they, they looked at our existing conditions, about 36,000 is our ERU, they projected a growth over the next 10 years, about 10,724. So we would end up at about 47,000 and a half. They're, they've identified that the current system collection percent that's being used is about 60%. They estimate that the next 10 years, the growth that we'll see is just about 16 and a half percent that would be used up by that. So that plays into the calculation of how we establish the impact fee and how that number is calculated. And then the growth beyond 10 years is 22.7%. That is also calculated in, the city can build projects that would accommodate that growth, but we can't collect impact fees on that funding until we have reached the point where that 10 years is there. So again, 10,724 is what we're anticipating, and then we would maintain that same ratio. So the four projects are listed here, I guess I've got a bigger slide here down, down the way. So the four projects are gonna cost $5.74 million. So the four projects are going to cost five point seven four million dollars total. There's one point eight eight million in eligible impact fees in the next ten years. This number is important, the two point three million dollars is cost to existing capacity that we would have to pay for as a city. The, the remainder of that can be, the, the one point eight can be collected in impact fees. This one point four needs to be, can be funded through the city, but then collected at a later date once the impacts have actually hit. So the four projects, there's one down here on, on Gordon Avenue. Capacity needs to be increased, but it will help for future growth as well. Gordon, or Gentile Street east of the golf course is also a second one that would be growth-related. And then Sugar Street between Hillfield and Gentile is the, is the, the third and fourth one. So it's split into two there with two different phases. So if I jump back here, that's those, those four. So you can see the Gordon Avenue one is actually not that much, there's only about one percent that can go towards that, but the other one's sixty-seven percent, seventeen and twenty-one. So just to give you an idea, these are the current impact fees that North Davis Sewer District is charging right now. So for a single-family residential home, it's thirty-four hundred dollars. For town home, it's thirty-one, twenty-six hundred for a multi-family, or multi-unit, and then twenty-one hundred for TOD. And then for non-residential, it's six hundred and fifty-six per thousand gallons of projected wastewater use. So that's the impact fee facilities plan, identifies which projects are eligible for impact fee collection, and, and then how much is eligible to be collected. So the impact fee analysis is the third component to this, just like with our transportation setup. Again, calculates the fees to ensure that growth. It complies with the Impact Fee Act, it's based on ERUs. The fees have to be spent or encumbered within six years after it's been paid, and they can't be implemented for ninety days following adoption by the city council. Exact state rules for our transportation fees. So what is the fee that, that we're proposing? The gross fee is four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents per ERU. Again, there's your ten thousand dollar, or ten thousand ERU growth. How does that break out? The existing capacity that the developers could buy into is two hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. We're not anticipating charging for any general assets like our buildings or any of our equipment or anything, but new construction costs would be a hundred and seventy-five point four dollars per ERU, and then our consulting fees can be added into that, so seven dollars per ERU. So that's where you get to four twenty-nine. One of the things that needs to happen, though, is we have to have a credit for projects that are addressing an existing deficiency but benefiting future growth. And so that's where that two point three nine million dollars I mentioned the city needs to back out of this calculation. So they credit that back over the next ten years at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And then they, they do the time value, the present value. And so the first year, they, they created this ten-year schedule. So the first year for a one ERU would be three hundred and eighty-six point eight one, and then you can see it would, it would slightly increase each year for the next ten years as that discount is, is taken off. So what does that look like as far as residential, non-residential? For a single-family, one ERU, obviously the three eighty-six point eight one. For a town home, it would be three hundred and eighty-four. For a multi-family, because they, they generate just slightly less than a regular ERU, two, two ninety-three, ninety-eight. And then for a transit-oriented, it would be two hundred and thirty-five point nine five. For non-residential, we base that off of the meter size, and you multiply it by the meter ratio from the American Waterworks Association for the five-eighths inch meter. And so you would take the meter ratio, multiply it by the, the ERU for a single ERU. And so these are the numbers that you would come up with. So for example, a two-inch meter would be three thousand ninety-four point four eight dollars. And then there's a ten-year schedule for that as well, so. With that, that's the presentation that I have on this. The city is looking at this, staff, excuse me, is looking at this saying, well, we have a water impact fee, and a stormwater impact fee, and a transportation impact fee. And now the growth and the density that we're seeing is creating a need for us to potentially have this fee and to be, I guess, fair and consistent, equitable across all of the development that's happening. We're recommending that we adopt these fee schedules and then implement them going forward. So want to answer any questions, any comments that you have? Our intent would be to bring this back on the twentieth of November for a public hearing, if that's what the council would like to, to see and then move forward with it from there.
Point is philosophically, you said it very well, so I would like to add to it. And I think the council, I know the council's aware of the previous discussions, but what are the, what are the philosophies besides, behind impact fees? Is that you're properly allocating the costs of new development to the people that are causing it as opposed to the residents? So if, if not for the imposition of the impact fee on, on these expansion projects that are caused by new development, the only other source of revenue is to tack it onto the base, either the existing residents or the agents. So you know that already, but some people may not understand. That's, it's really a phil, it's a philosophical thing, too, to make sure that the proper, that, that the segments that are creating the demand are paying for their fair share of the cost and that the new development costs aren't being borne by existing residents, so.
Is there, is there a reason why we haven't had it in the past already?
So, so in the past, we haven't had larger upsizing of these pipelines in order to accommodate that growth. Most of the lines that are, are in, North Davis has done a great job planning for that future development. And so their trunk lines obviously have been upsized numerous times, but where we connect with eight-inch pipes, it's really mostly good development that has constructed those. And so there is no way to collect an impact fee on a minimum-sized eight-inch pipe.
With the, with the changes in the, in the general plan, and, you know, there's, there's more density being improved now than there was in the past. Some of those, I call them local, it's not the same, it's not the right word to use, but the, the AS lines that are, Steve's talked about, typically developers put in, that are the standard requirement. In some cases, because of the density that's coming to areas with the new, new general plan definitions, is there might be need for a ten- or a twelve-inch line. And so what this does, that, that kind of increase doesn't get captured by the district. But it need, it can be captured because it's a, a little bit of a system improvement as opposed to just a, a base project improvement, it's the eight inches. And so even though there's only four of them over the course of ten years, we feel like it was important to bring that to you and, and see just philosophically, you know, it's not a large amount. Do we want to do that? But that's what's driving it, I, I mistake that, but it's just because the density is coming in areas that before weren't anticipated to have that density.
No, no, you're, no, that's, that's good, I appreciate that. But I'm, so my question is, so rather than putting in the standard eight inches, you're going to upsize it? But if any of these new areas, is there all, is, would you be tapping into a smaller diameter and have to choke point and back down?
No, we wouldn't do that, that's why they're.
So all of these areas would then be, the flow would go to a larger size? Okay.
Yeah, that's where we, we would look at that and engineer it to make sure we weren't doing that thing.
Yeah.
So the capacity, that, that capacity ratio of point seven-five has to be maintained from there all the way down to the connection into North Davis. And, and North Davis has our master plans, and we work together to make sure that we're not sending them more than they can handle. But, but as we increase our densities, it increases their demands as well. And, and so it's kind of a little bit of a.
Which is why we need bigger drawing beds.
There's not, I mean, this isn't a new concept statewide, I'm guessing. There's other jurisdictions that already have a sewer impacting.
The vast majority of cities that are kind of exploding right now, they all have these because they're building that kind of infrastructure and, and the growth that's coming from that. We have been blessed, I guess, to not have to need this. And, and we can operate without it. Like Alex mentioned, we just have had to build those into the user rates, whereas this is more equitable to, to use it the way we do with all of our other user rates, where the impact fees go towards these growth projects.
Any other questions? How does that translate down to the, to just the average homeowner who's going to be benefiting from development in the future?
As, as far as the cost or, yeah. So, so for a single-family house, they would have a three hundred and eighty-six dollar impact fee added to their permit fee that would come through. And then they would still be paying the North Davis impact fees that, that showed you on that other slide as well. So it would increase there. But we did adjust the water rates for impact fees slightly down, probably actually more than the three hundred dollars, but it's not straight across.
Generally, I mean, the development committee gets an additional fee. How would they, have they pass this on to the new homeowner in some way? How do they, do they do that?
Probably through the, the pricing. Yeah, it would come through as the impact fee cost that they would, or the building permit fee cost would show that through there.
The residents still pay you, but hopefully it's the resident that has been, made that growth to buy in the home as opposed to the existing people that are involved in that transaction.
Steve, let me throw a scenario out, and forgive me if you covered it. You said a lot of things that I didn't understand in that presentation. Say a subdivision was built ten years ago. Now, open land adjacent to it that feeds through that subdivision is higher density now, and there's a need to increase the flow through the established subdivision. Is that something that's going to need to be changed, updated? Or do you, do you see that kind of situation?
Yeah, so, so all of the, the models that they ran, so I probably don't have the right slides. So, so our, our consultants ran this model and said, what is the density going to look like? And then they ran all of these models for the sewer pipes. And these red lines here, these pink lines are the ones they identified that are in that exact position of yours, where the growth around those lines will then require this capacity to be upsized or whatnot. And so that's what this impact fee will pay for is, we can't say, oh, the pipe's already too small and you have to pay for that. But we can't say, well, we're going to make the pipe bigger to meet our existing demand, but we're going to also make it that next step bigger, so we go from an eight to a twelve, and that will accommodate the growth of that new pipe, or that new development that comes in.
So that's the problem.
Yeah.
One of the problems.
Kind of explain the, out west there, in the far bottom corner of the west side of town. How, why is it just in that little, explain that?
So, so this is a super, super flat.
Right.
Part of the road, and we're actually fighting grades. And so this one has been identified as a potential issue, but it's fifty years down the road. If every density allowance that is made comes to fruition, if that makes sense. So the maximum density that that property could be in our general plan, I can't remember the number of that, but they, they basically said, worst-case scenario, if you, if you maximize the density on this ground to be as high as possible in the general plan, that may be a problem fifty years from now. So it's not included in this impact fee analysis, but it is there just as a, if that's the way that goes, then, then we'll need to watch that as it grows. But there is plenty of capacity in that line for quite a while before it needs to be looked at. What's going on, just a.
All right. That works.
All right.
Okay, we're good?
I, I guess, a little bit of direction, we bring this back to you for a future public hearing discussion and.
Have two head nods, do I have the other three?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, okay, you got all your head nods. Okay, we'll go on to the next item then.
Head nods now.
This one's on the state, Utah proposed imposition on our water quality.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna revisit our, our short discussion from last time about the, the water fees. If it's okay, I'm not going to revisit the public water system fee. If everybody's clear on that one, they want to impose a three cent per thousand gallon. I'm going to call it a tax, but they're calling it a fee, three cents per thousand gallons to pay for the division of drinking waters' operations and functions. I think that one's pretty clear, but I wanted to revisit the water infrastructure plan that they had put together or, or developed. So the Water Development Coordinating Council, they submitted those three hundred, or three, they asked for projects that would potentially need state funding in the future. I, I have to, to put this caveat out there, when they presented it to us, they came and they said, we're just collecting all of these projects, anything you might want to have, potentially need a, a, you know, state funding help with. And by the way, if you don't have it on this list, you can't even ask for state funding. And so I believe there's a lot of projects on that list that were put on this list simply as a just-in-case, but really would never have been sought for funding. We put fourteen projects, submitted fourteen projects, thirty-five million dollars. One of those projects was to rebuild one of the reservoirs in Leighton to be able to increase its capacity. It's about ten and a half million dollars is what our estimate was. But the remainder of the other projects were far smaller, and, and the reality is we would have just programmed them into our, our existing fee structures and, and built the projects. So if you asked Leighton, we could easily remove twenty-five million dollars of projects from this list. And if you really ask me again if I have to pay these fees, if the citizens have to pay this fee, we should just remove every project we put on this list and, and just figure out how to pay for it ourselves, so.
Okay, just really quick.
Yeah.
I, I heard that the cities weren't giving much time either to do this.
No, it was very quick that they came out and said, hey, we've got to have this, and we've got to.
Few days.
I, I wouldn't say a few days, but it was definitely fairly quickly. And so what ended up happening is they, they put the law into effect, they did this. They, they started, you know, pushing for all these fees and things, and then they put this fee study together. But in order to start with the fee study, they had to get all these projects and the, the things together. So again, they're, they're proposing basically sixteen dollars and thirty-two cents per month per household. That comes down to an existing taxing authority that they have, where they can, excuse me, it's right here, a sixteenth of the, of the state sales tax rate on all growth, gross taxable, that's already there. There is some kind of ad valorem concept, which is the property tax style, they're still developing that. So that's a second component. And then this state water future user fee, which is going to be the sixteen thirty-two. And, and it really breaks down to point seven-five cents per thousand gallons on water connections and point three seven cents per thousand gallons on all sewer connections. So my math on this, if I bring this up and, I apologize, I was going to try and zoom in on this, but let's see if I can do this. There we go. So a couple of the components, they have some rankings of these projects and how the projects are going to be considered for funding. One of those is that it's got to be a critical need, it's got to be a, a, you know, a hardship, those types of things. So as they've determined what a hardship is, they've come up with a, a calculation based on an EPA study that says anything over four point five percent of your median adjusted gross, adjusted gross income could be considered a hardship for combined water and sewer together. So the state feels like, according to this proposal, that three percent is not unreasonable to expect people to have to pay. And so I did a couple of quick calculations. Our, our MAGI is sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. So we would need to charge a thousand and five dollars per year to get to the one and a half for water, and then another thousand and five dollars to get to one and a half for sewer, so a total of two thousand and ten. Our current fee for water combined with drinking water, culinary and secondary is forty-four dollars and seventy-three cents per month. Sewer is thirty-seven dollars per month. And, and this includes the costs that we collect for North Davis Sewer District. So as you calculate that out, we're at a point eight percent MAGI for water and point six percent for sewer. State average is about one point two for water and about eight for sewer. So you calculate that out, and they basically have said, you have additional capacity to raise your rates by thirty-nine dollars for water and forty-six dollars for sewer. Per month. And what that would do is that would generate, well, so we generate twenty and a half million dollars with twenty-one thousand connections, just for, for rough numbers. They basically would say. They basically would say, if you want money from us and you're not charging this three percent magi, then it makes your project almost, I believe it's going to make our projects ineligible. We would need to basically raise our rates a hundred and five percent combined between water and sewer to get to their three percent magi. It would generate another twenty-one million dollars a year. We have thirty-five million dollars of projects on the list, so we can generate enough money in two years to pay for those. Then they would, their anticipated costs for us would be a twenty percent increase on our current rates combined, and they would take four point one million dollars from the residents of Leighton to fund all of these other projects throughout the community. So.
Other communities.
And other communities.
Yeah.
Anybody on the list?
The money our residents were paid would be used to fund projects for other.
Outside of our area.
Yeah, I believe it will be extremely hard for Leighton City to even see any of this money come back to us if they're going to use that three percent magi as a calculation. So as we looked at this, and then part of the other challenges are that we, as you look at the projects, anything over ten million dollars is only eligible for up to two percent or twenty percent of the grant, whereas a lot of the smaller projects, you can go anywhere from twenty percent to seventy-five percent grant money. I personally feel like maybe there needs to be a real hard look at what we're trying to fund with this money. If we're funding real regional projects, our understanding is this was to try and fund really major projects, like some of the things that Weaver Basin has in their master plans, that they're already charging this capital asset recovery rehabilitation money for. It's not that there aren't projects out there that need this, but we believe that this is just basically a, we're gonna take all this money and then we're gonna redistribute it to people who think they want it more, whatever. But if we have to double our water rates and our sewer rates in order to even see this money, then it would be better for us to raise our rates by the four million dollars and take care of our own projects over the next six years, seven years. So that's.
What's the feeling that you have, because you've already sent feedback, like this is something obviously that some in the legislature are interested in, and it sounded to me like it's to really help fund some of these other areas across the state that maybe don't have as many, you know, residents as we do in other cities. But do you feel confident that there's recourse, that you're able to push back and say, yeah, we don't wanna do this?
I, to be honest, I don't know. That's what we're going to push for. I think the league is trying to talk through this as well. I think there needs to be some discussions, and as you as elected officials, it really comes down to, the state elected officials need to know what is on this list. I think they're gonna get this report, and it's gonna be crazy detailed and crazy busy to look at, but, you know, this is the breakdown of kind of expense needed and things like that, and they've broken it out into each one of these different areas. But to your point, there's water systems out there with a hundred and twenty people on them. And they, they're just not solvent. If you were a business and you were trying to run that kind of a business, you wouldn't say, let's build this water system, right? And so they're going to basically, in my opinion, take money from established communities that have already paid for their growth and move it into areas that need to pay for their growth as well, but they're gonna use the rest of the state to pay for it. And maybe that's just my own personal view of this, but I believe there's a substantial number of projects on this list that most likely shouldn't be on the project list because of the way they asked for the input. And if somebody took a hard look at it, they could knock quite a few out. If we could take twenty-five million dollars off ourselves, there's two hundred and fifty-five other cities that submitted stuff, there's probably people that submitted their entire master plan to this and said, yeah, we'd love free money, and it's not free. It's just not. It's coming from somewhere.
Could I ask then that, I mean, I don't know, we've talked about this at the league quite a bit, but I would say from our city standpoint, I think it would be helpful, and Clint, Drakey may already have this, but if we knew the projects that we had on there, how much they are, and even something like a two-pager from some of these slides about, this is how much it would cost for us to fund these, and if we increased our rates by this one and a half percent or this three percent that they're saying, we could fund those on our own. So just having that information, I think, would be helpful for us to be able to talk to at least our legislators who are here in our city to say, hey, you know, this is coming up, I mean, we know who's running this. He's running, he's run these bills for the past three or four years. So we know who it's coming from, but to be able to give a good perspective from our city and saying, this is, this is what we see, are we missing something? And then letting our legislators know that, hey, we wouldn't likely, or we don't believe that we'd be able to benefit from any of these projects, we wouldn't probably receive any of this money, and we'd be raising fees to support other areas. I think we need that to be clear, so we can share that. And I would rather have something like that before January, so that we're not bombarding them.
I was just gonna say, why don't we do it now? Let's do it before the holidays hit, before anything gets going.
I've made Ken aware, I've sent him all our math. He's aware of it. He's aware that other cities are frustrated as well. He mentioned that they wanna work on it during the session, so yeah, let's get something in writing and get to them.
Well, I think one of the issues will be that there are lots of cities who are very happy about this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, one of the questions I have, and maybe it'll be pushed back on what we're talking about, maybe not, your thoughts? We have, some of our water comes from our wells. Is that, in other cities, South Jordan, for instance, they have to import all their water. And this might be a great deal for them.
Well, in Jordan Valley, Water Committee District may have some really massive projects on the list as well, right? But, you know, our concern is, is that if we raised our rates to this three percent magi, we could fund our entire project.
Yeah, we wouldn't even need to ask for money.
We wouldn't ask, I believe if we raised it to even collect the four million a year, we wouldn't ever go to the state for these. And that's what I think is happening, is they're structuring this a lot like the state revolving fund money that the federal government has usually put in play, and that historically hasn't been used by the larger systems and the larger cities, because we take care of our own stuff and we fund those things, we don't have those same needs. The smaller communities, I'm not saying they should just all of a sudden come up with all this money either, but, but to come into a community like Leighton and take four million dollars a year out of it, and then have us try and compete for our own money back to do these projects when, if all the big cities said, hey, we really don't have to have this money, if this is what it's gonna cost, then we need to be able to say, we're gonna opt out and not even ask for the money.
Yeah. It's hard, it's obviously hard to raise water rates. We've been through it, this crew's been through it.
For one dollar.
And.
And they want sixteen and a half.
So let's just say we don't do any of the, raising anything, do any of that, 'cause it doesn't make any sense. But we have to collect this money for the state, the sixteen dollars, thirty-two cents, and we don't even see any benefit from that. And then we reevaluate our water master plan, and things have changed, and we're growing more, and now you have to, wow, we gotta look at this, and we might have to raise water rates. Who's gonna, who's gonna say that's okay in Leighton City when sixteen dollars every month's going somewhere else? Like, take it from that. I mean, that's gonna be incredibly difficult to have that conversation with citizens if sixteen dollars a month's being taken out. It doesn't make any sense.
Well, I think the bigger, I think a bigger push for me would be that, and we can do this with the league also, you said, Steve, that you feel like a lot of cities just put like their, pretty much their like Christmas wish list on here. If, you know, at the league, we talk about having their respective city staff actually look at the list and see what would we really need to be on this list, like if it's a regional thing, so like Great Salt Lake is close to us, and other cities in Davis County, Utah Lake is close to other cities, where it's not just one city that may contribute or need to help, you know, make that, you know, like a state source. If there are projects like that, that were more statewide, projects that people across the state are using, maybe if the list is pared down to something like that as opposed to whatever your, you know, pie in the sky list is, then it can be reevaluated. Because it sounds like with all that's on there, and this increase that they're requiring cities to already do, and to provide this sixteen dollars, that that's based off of everything. And if there's something, even for recreation, right, we have lots of, lots of lakes that the entire state uses, we go to different parts of the state. Things like that, to me, make more sense. And so maybe that could also be a part of this push or the discussion, to say, we don't want to be funding every city in the state's, you know, pet projects, but if there's something that is regional or is a statewide recreational type of thing, something that the state cares about broadly, then look at that and reevaluate, because otherwise, this just sounds crazy.
And that's, that's how this started.
That's always pitched.
We were, and you were there, when Representative Kane talked about what he was trying to accomplish. He started by talking about the reservoirs that are being abandoned by the federal government, and the fact that we've got, there's never been reservoirs, nobody's maintaining them other than maybe the districts that are trying to, and they're gonna be, they're gonna need to be replaced, they're gonna need to be maintained better. And that was the, now it's obviously morphed from there.
Yeah.
But that was the start of the, to your point.
Eight or so years ago, Weaver Basin started collecting that money from all of the district, or all the cities to start that process.
I understand requirement. For those great reasons, now they're using the same excuse, eight years later, to justify this. It doesn't seem like a very, I wonder, just an opinion, jaded one a bit, but I wonder if the effort to try to get as many things into the list was strategic as opposed to economic, because it creates a sense of a crisis.
Right.
That has to be addressed. But it doesn't seem very conservative, aligning with the principles that are articulated by the dominant political philosophy right in state, to take from people and give it to other people. This is, they're framing this as a fee. This doesn't meet the definition of a fee. If the city tried to impose a fee like this, this is a tax.
Yeah.
Well, if you, if there is need, I think everybody would recognize that in certain parts of the state, there are significant water demands, that the local people can't do that. That's a proper place, from my view, to say, we have discretionary taxes that have come into the state of Utah that we can determine how to allocate. And it may be that some of this tax and that tax goes to help that, because that's a benefit to the state. But typically, you don't impose that on, say, something that it isn't, right? And intentionally force it on everybody. You're already collecting discretionary funds.
It's a pay to play, but you don't actually get a play, you just have to pay. And I guess I was curious about the fee and tax situation, although that's been mitigated quite a bit, but it's typically, now it's coming from the state side of things, which makes it a whole different ballgame. But it seems to me like that the state imposing a tax on a municipality to pay into a general fund, do we even do that in other areas? I mean, I can't even think of, like, collectivizing basically everybody into one pot. Like, with the sewer district, it's a taxing entity, right? Raise a tax, and the one sewer kinda just rolls into North Davis. But with this, I mean, it's, this is just totally different.
Yeah.
It's kind of a morph.
But they've assured us it's a fee, not a tax.
Because taxes.
Comes a lottery for those cities that can't afford to do it.
How does a fee, if you want, if you say it's gonna be three percent of magi?
Yeah, where do they get that?
Our fees have to be based on what you're costing, like, sure, this is our best, but so it's, that's just all this nonsense.
Yeah, when they're pressed on, they just say, well, we assure you it's a fee. We assure you.
So.
And we don't know what else is on the list. I'm making some assumptions on the list.
Representative Kieran, this?
We know what we submitted.
And the state.
So they're.
How big of a buy-in do they got to support him on this? I mean, it's another legislative.
I haven't seen a lot, I mean, I have no idea where.
So this legislation passed last year, and they're now taking this plan and they're presenting it to the governor and everybody to decide if they want to implement this. So I don't know that it's necessarily like there's new legislation coming. This is basically, they're deciding how much it's going to be. And that's scary.
Yeah, they got permission without details.
Yeah.
Without doing the details, but the laws already passed.
And then we also.
So what's, have you done some hearings?
There's been some, there's been some public meetings on it.
What's been the feedback there to get a sense?
The bigger cities are asking what we're gonna get out of it, because we're saying the math isn't mathing for us, and the smaller people are like, oh, yeah, this is great. And we even had somebody from the state mention that, well, it's grant money, it's free money, and free money's free. And it frustrated me, because I was like, no, this is not free money. Just because somebody gave you money, it doesn't come from the money tree, it's taken from some other place. And so to Clint's point, our understanding was, is they were looking into what the needs were, and when they came to us and said, hey, what are these projects? We said, well, these potentially could be some that somebody might ask for state funding on, but it would only be after we had done all that we could do to make sure we were funding ourselves. But for them to say, well, because the EPA says four and a half, we're gonna set it at three, you know, we feel like that's fairly ridiculous. I'll just be frank, we looked at some other cities that we know have relatively higher water rates because of, Park City for one, their rates are very high, but they do a lot of water pumping, they do a lot of, you know, things that cost a lot of money to get the things there. And even their cost for what they charge versus their magi, they would still have to raise their rates significantly to meet that three percent threshold.
I just, the, this is obviously an editorial comment, but just the idea of coming in and telling the city that your rates aren't high enough, when we're the ones that's been funding our own projects, how do they know our rates aren't high enough? We're the one that have to go out to the citizens and tell them, this is what your rates are, this is what we're paying for, we need, this is why. So some high in the sky person comes and never even set foot in Leighton and says, our rates are too low because their matrix says so. Well, we've been paying for our projects just fine with the rates as they are. And it has nothing to do with what's going on at Escalante or somebody else, it's because it's in Leighton. That's really frustrating.
Yeah, and they're basing that number off of this EPA, the EPA study in here. They say that the EPA has determined that four and a half is the number, and so they feel like three is reasonable. And they say, they say four and a half would be a hardship, is what they're saying. And I've been in a lot of meetings with people at different, you know, engineers and people who operate systems, and there is a prevailing attitude by a lot of places that they say, well, our job is to keep rates as low as possible, and we've had to correct them politely and say, no, your job is to make sure your rates are sufficient to fund your needs and your system's requirements, and it's tough. But sometimes you have to go to somebody and say, this is what's needed to operate the system, not just, we're trying to make slush funds and things like that. But it is difficult, because if that is a hard number that they're saying, you have taxing authority that you're not using, why would we give you state money? We're never gonna get there. I just can't, I could never come and look you guys in the eyes and say, we need to double our rates so that we can go try and get a million dollars from the state, because you're gonna generate twenty-one million dollars off of that. And you're gonna double the entire revenue of the city, and that's absolutely ludicrous to me. So.
I think one of the narratives we've gotta purvey is, you know, the, look at the county raising their taxes by thirty percent, proposing. So show me the justification for that. What, where are the shortfalls? Why do you need that added revenue? How are we gonna convince our residents, we're raising rates this much, and, but, but we're already, you know.
You have no idea what it's going.
We're already taking care of our system. So we can't justify that. So that's a, that puts us, we're the bad guy, and then as Clint said, then we're gonna be raising our rates again when we need to pay for the projects ourselves, so.
And this is a classic example, that Tyson, right here, in the Weaver River Basin, that says that we would generate, I think that says twenty-five, I'm getting, I think my glasses are not as great as they should be. But they're saying our percent of expense needed is twenty-one percent. So what are they gonna do with that four percent? It's the difference there. They're gonna take it and they're gonna give it to the Utah Lake area, because look at their, their contribution versus their need, right? And so any of these areas that are paying more, Canav, the Virgin River area, they've got, you know, I'm sure they've got needs out there, but maybe they didn't get enough projects on the list. I don't know. But that's where the challenge is, is they're saying, at first, we're gonna keep the revenue in the basin that it was collected from. But, once you build all the projects in that, you know, in that spa, who's to say it's not going somewhere else?
So let's circle back around then, quickly, 'cause I know we're running out of time. Do we want to try to schedule a meeting now with our local representatives and legislature to combat those sort? To educate them on our position, really, is what that meeting would be about? And see if we can get something put together?
Would we want that to be like, in advance of our other meeting? Or would we want that to take the place of it?
Well, I'm thinking what we could do, if it works out, is maybe our next scheduled meeting, you know, rather than starting like at five-thirty, maybe we have start at four o'clock or four-thirty. Invite them to be here at four-thirty and go through it, and then go on to our regular scheduled business.
But would it just be this? Or do we wanna do our?
No. I, I, I think we'd still wanna wait for our other, unless there's.
One reason I asked about that.
Is there other big topics that you feel like we need to hit now?
The only reason I asked about that is because the last couple of years, it has been as brutal with attendance. And also, it being so close to the start of the session, you know? And with all of the.
So there's excuses for that.
Yeah, there's excuses for leaving early or not being there. And then all the talk about, at the league about getting in front of them, you know, more frequently, more often, not just waiting. So that's my only reason for, for asking. Would we want to just be talking about this? Or would we want to do, you know, our whole other session earlier?
This is certainly, I'd say, the biggest topic. But I'm sure there's, I know we've got others.
Is part of this plan, or does it require legislative approval?
The, the funding, I believe they have to choose to do something.
So the way they're, you know, past years, we've seen policy like this being developed throughout the year, and it's approved in the first week of the session. So the earlier the better, I would say.
So, so they anticipate having this state water plan done by the end of the year? Or, excuse me, yeah, next year, excuse me. So, so they're planning to have this report? They had the report done by the end of October. They're planning to push it through so that they can then have March as their, their actual, hey, this is our plan and the budget will present.
So appropriations?
I think it'll go to appropriations.
So, I mean, there's no reason to talk to anyone else.
Right.
Who are you gonna talk to?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, no offense to other elected representatives in the city.
Right.
I mean, what are we gonna tell them, giving this presentation? And they'll say, yeah, great, and what are we gonna do about it? So, I mean, I, I think, if it's just a, to your point, if it's just a funding thing at this point, they've already voted for it. So who actually has a say in if it's funded or not, or how it gets funded?
We've got people on the push for appropriations.
Yeah.
So back to my question then.
Excuse the pun, but don't water it down.
Just talk to the one?
You know.
Huh?
What?
I'm, I'm all for having the discussion as soon as possible.
I, I, I think this is good information and the fact that you show the impact here, us, and the zero benefit behind it. I think they need to be educated quickly on it.
Well, and if they see that here, I mean, they know.
Then they can understand it.
They know what's happening, what's going to happen here. And there are many other cities like us and larger than us who the same thing, I'm sure, is what happened here.
Good presidents are gonna sit down and bill. State may have made a water fund.
State may have made a water.
Water, future water user.
Yeah. So we'll try it, so maybe we pull it, get it in.
So do you want to do that as a conjunction with one of these types of things or is that a separate time?
Do you need to give them time?
No.
No.
I would just say, they got a two-week notice.
If we're gonna do it, let's do this.
Yeah.
Don't do a bunch of other stuff so they can walk, you know.
We need them to fully comprehend this one.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess what I was wondering is if there's, if it's in this environment, will their schedules allow them to be here? Makes sense?
Yeah.
Because they're gonna be, in this, where's the most free, back-and-forth, transparent discussion gonna take place? Is it tied with a, a street city council meeting, or is it?
I think there's some strategic meeting.
Okay. All right, let's see what we can figure.
Just a thought, I, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay. All righty. Okay, we'll figure it out. Okay? Let's go ahead and move on. We only have ten minutes for an important topic here of discussion. Joellen, jump in quick.
All right, thank you very much for having us back here. I'll be really quick so that we can get through everything. Much of these, much of these slides are just a repeat from our last time that we got together back in June, so I won't take too much time. But as a reminder, presently, we are unleashing dogs, dogs, unleashed dogs in our parks. And this was an ordinance that was passed back in two thousand and sixteen. This is a map that just shows where those places are where they can take their dogs on leash to be able to enjoy being out with them. And then we also provided just an example of what those amenities are provided and our maintenance tasks. Then jumping into the, both of what we wanna talk about today is just the option of introducing dogs in parks off-leash. And we have three different categories of how that could look. The first one is the off-leash defense area. This is a very traditional type of application that is, you probably have seen in other communities where there's an area that's fenced off and specific to dogs. There could be small and large dog areas. We also provided last time just a summary of what those benefits and challenges may be. I have a slide that summarizes both, all of these, so I won't talk too much right now about them. And then we have our off-leash shared use park area, which is basically, there's no fencing. There's just areas designated where dogs can be off-leash in park spaces. And then we also have a summary of what those shared use pros and cons are versus capital and operational, and then just also maintenance applications. And then the third one was our off-leash open space trail corridor areas, specifically just being very natural spaces where there's trails and dogs are allowed to be off-leash. And then also here's a summary of those open space applications for benefits and challenges. So here's the summary, breaking down all the off-leash options and then also what we presently have right now. Capital improvement costs, obviously, fenced off-leash areas are the most expensive to just develop, capital-wise. On the operational side, they are also the most expensive or high cost to be able to maintain. And then with our shared use parks, they're the least expensive to implement the capital improvements, basically deciding signs. But they do have medium costs just with the nature of the, the site and being able to keep it presentable. And then the open space trail corridor areas, that's kind of the meat in the middle, capital improvement costs. And they are, on the maintenance side, the lowest costs to maintain. It's very natural. And then our, what we have right now is basically, we would be having no change in cost if we continue in that way. Moving forward, last we, last time we met, we talked about if we were to introduce dogs off-leash in parks, we would look to recommending an off-leash open space trail corridor area application. There's a lot of colors here, but I want to just bring your attention to the one that's in yellow. This is one that has been under construction little by little. And we'll talk about it more as I get into the next slides. But I wanna talk about the benefit of introducing an open space trail corridor area for dogs off-leash. As you look to our neighbors around us, most of them are the off-leash fence area application. And this is a service area that just shows how, how much, how far you could reach the residents in that area with the size of the park they have. So with this open space trail corridor area, the benefit is, is that when you're getting a big space, you're able to service a broader area of residents. This is just good practice when you're trying to introduce dogs off-leash. Is, the size is very important. The larger the better. Average size, three to five, the best would even be seven plus acres. It just works so much better. Undersizing causes overcrowding, increased conflict, environmental damage, and unsatisfied user groups. So the benefit with this one where we've got located, it's centralized, it's accessible, and we wanna hit that five-mile radius service area. So jumping back over to the one that I talked about that was in yellow, this is the East Ridge Nature Park space. It's sixteen acres of open space that's been dedicated to us as part of the East Ridge PRUD that's been underway for many, many years. And over time, as we have, as you can see, there, there's two areas where we have planned to have trails. There's this one on the north side. And then crossing over a culvert onto the other side of the creek is this other open space where we have soft path trail system planned. Much of the amenities, as I mentioned, are trails. We're looking to introduce benches, gazebos, places for people to picnic, enjoy the natural beauty. Docky pots would be introduced, and then this landscaping mitigation to make it look nice. It is sixteen acres, however, much of that is, is the river, the creek. And so about nine point six of it is usable. It's just still good when you think about if we were to do an off-leash open space dog area, nine point six areas, nine point six acres is pretty great. And it also allows one point six miles of people to walk. I also wanna just talk about the benefit of having this space be an option for people to use to take their dogs. But in addition, it also services people who just want to go for a walk. So our investment, or if we were to do this, our capital improvements are reaching not only people with interest in using their dogs off-leash, but they're also reaching out to people who just like to be outside. And so it's more on multi-purpose. Here's some pictures of what it looks like. A lot of potential there. And then just really quick, this is a snapshot of what it would cost if we were to move forward with installing these trails. And then if we were to introduce, having this be a space where people could be with dogs off-leash. Just briefly, phase one and phase two, we've been working on for some time. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we did the road and trail access, which is that picture up there. Phase two, we've been working on the parking lot lighting and introducing the restroom, which is finished. And so right here, we're at phase three, where if we could move forward in twenty-six, twenty-seven, this school year, plus we could work on repairing the construction documents. And then in the following year, we could look to implement these amenities and with the ability to open it up for an off-leash open space trail corridor area. I think that's it. I've got three minutes left to ask any questions.
Quick question then. So that first picture you showed, I mean, obviously, you get a little bit of rain that's nothing but mud and yuck. So what are you proposing for the trail then to kind of accommodate that of the around here?
So the, this map, this, this one, that picture right there.
That, yeah.
Yeah, that, that just hasn't been developed yet. But this would be an asphalt trail around here.
But down below, where it would be more off-leash area.
Oh, that would be a soft, it'd be chat. Or it, it's, it's a very compact, crushed, crushed rock.
Yeah, but it's softer, yeah.
Yeah, but it, it does well, it does well with drainage and won't be muddy.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good product and would work well.
Okay, I like it.
So I have a better proponent of the trail option we talked about. You and I talked about. My only question would be, if we're, this has been in the works for so many years. And if we were to look at moving forward on this and we could repair construction documents, is there any way that we would, why would we have to wait until twenty-twenty-seven to actually get started? I mean, I know we have the parks planned already. And so would it just be a matter of if we have impact fees to move this up? Or like, why do we have to wait a whole year?
We're, we're looking to be able to dip into park impact fees to fund this. We don't have enough to fund whole project in this twenty-six, twenty-seven year coming up. So it'll allow us to be able to save up to be able to get the full.
I know, I was gonna say, what if we put in an application?
We're just.
Yeah.
This, and the reason it's taken a few years is because we've been dependent on that subdivisions for that development areas, impact fees independent of the rest of the city. If we, if you give us the direction to move forward, we can simply, or we could put forward an application for ramp funds this year. Since it passed, we have a little more wiggle room in that area.
Yeah. I'm gonna favor putting in the application. I mean, I, I don't know that the full amount would get funded on that, but, you know, why not?
But we only have to meet that gap with ramp. We do have park impact fees to.
Okay. Yeah, let's.
This is just the whole amount. We have some of it already. We just don't have the full amount.
Yeah, we have quite a bit.
Okay, yeah, I'm all down for that.
And that area is fenced, right?
No, it's a trail.
It's a nature trail.
Yeah, it's, it's got.
There's a hillside and everything and.
But there's fences on the north and south where these residences, they've been building their, so they're putting in their fencing. And then on the south side, it already has existing homes that have a fence. So I appreciate.
Okay.
So we just have a convention for moving ahead for this, to meet that.
Maybe it's gonna run there.
Right.
What we're trying to say is, obviously, we think it addresses the issues and provides an opportunity for everybody across that spectrum of users to be able to use it.
I think you're seeing all the head nods and also go for the application process as well.
Got it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Joellen. Good job, you have ten minutes. Okay.
There was three. There was three.
Yeah. I need a motion to adjourn so we can go into a regular scheduled meeting. However, there is some additional items. And if you guys are willing to, also, we possibly come back in for a closed-door meeting? So, so you guys willing to do that?
I'm here. Might as well.
Okay, I need a motion.
We need a second.
Does that qualify for coming back in? Doesn't it? They need, you need to state that.
Yeah, just go, yeah, just do it in there.
Okay, all right. Okay, adjourned.
How come? I never hear in a dog park. Is that just?
I hear it.
I don't.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and get our Leighton City Council meeting started for November sixth. I appreciate everyone who's here in attendance. And I want to acknowledge some scouts out there. Thank you very much for attending our meeting. As customary, we like to start all of our meetings with a prayer and a pledge. And this month, it'll be conducted by Councilmember Thomas. So I'll turn the time over to you.
That, Thomas, or? I'll give a prayer, then we'll get up and have the pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be gathered here as city members, as city councils, as a mayor, for those who need to try and keep order in the city to do things which make things work right. We pray that we may have the wisdom, pray that we may look at things in the right way, that we may do the things that are helpful for the city. We ask thy blessings that they might be upon us to do this. And this we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilman Thomas. Council, we have four sets of minutes that needs to be approved, so I'd look for a motion. And if you could, go ahead and state those unless there are any corrections.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from Leighton City Council Work Meeting, May 1st, 2025, Leighton City Council Work Meeting, June 5th, 2025, Leighton City Council Meeting, June 5th, 2025, and the Leighton City Council Work Meeting, June 19th, 2025.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved in second that we adopt the minutes as written. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to our municipal announcements event, so I'll turn the time over to the council for any events they might be aware of.
Thank you, Mayor. Parks and Rec Department has a lot of activities going on. As you know, we're going into the holiday season, so one that's a little ways out, but the end of this month, November 24th, the evening, we will be having the holiday lighting ceremony. So the lights out here in Constitution Circle are always looked forward to by the community and outside of our community as well. We see a lot of people coming from around the county and the area. That'll happen from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here, I believe, at Constitution Circle. So it'd be the large...
New pavilion.
Pavilion, thank you. Words are tough sometimes. So again, November 21st, or November 24th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This Saturday, just a couple days away, November 8th, we will be celebrating Veterans Day with our Veterans Day Parade and Honor Ceremony, starting at 11:00, 11:00 a.m., and with the ceremony around 11:00. The parade will start at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. The ceremony at the Vietnam Wall will be at 12:30 p.m. So come out and you can see the route on the city's website in the Parks and Rec Department. A couple of things happening at the Leighton Heritage Museum. First of all, November 12th will be the Turkey Trot, children, for ages two to five, with a guardian. I mean, don't just drop them off, please. That'll be, again, November 12th, $10 per child, and be fun Thanksgiving activity at the museum. Also happening right now at the museum is a traveling exhibit titled "The Pen Is Mightier: Writing a Revolution." So part of America's 250 celebration coming up next year, just showcasing how communication over 250 years ago helped to, helped us experience independence as America. So go to the museum. That exhibit is open now and going through into January. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. We were fortunate enough that the state recognized that our museum was one that they definitely wanted to put this exhibit in on behalf of all of Davis County, but then also for the surrounding areas. So hats off to our museum curator and the commissioner. So did you have some announcements?
I... Is the 22nd Turkey Day bowling?
That's this Saturday.
Okay.
Which we will be bowling.
Yeah, last I checked, but is there a waiting list? Yeah, I believe that's all filled, so filled up quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So on behalf of the Leighton Communities That Care, we will have a table booth at the New Ames Night of Hope. New Ames is one of the high schools that's here in Leighton that's housed at the Weber State Davis Campus, in the Stewart Center Ballroom on Wednesday, November 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And this is an event where parents and students are invited to attend a mental health presentation. They'll focus on building resilience, fostering hope, and supporting mental health well-being. And so we invite you to come out to New Ames Night of Hope and visit your Leighton Communities That Care table. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I was at an event with the Clearfield City Council folks and was handed a flyer that there is a food drive, ongoing food drive for the Hill Air Force Base Airmen's Attic. And this is something that our community is working to help military families who are currently, many of them are working and are not getting paid. And so they are asking for canned and boxed food items, diapers, baby food formula, and household items. And you can drop any of those items off to Clearfield City Hall from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, or at the True by Hilton, which is just located right outside of the Air Force Base. And they are accepting donations at that location 24/7. So this is just something to help our military family and friends who are in our area, and that's going to support the Airmen's Attic. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. So in addition to that, as part of what Councilmember Roberts spoke about, America 250, currently at our swimming pool, we are exercising an additional food drive, and it's in acknowledgement of America 250, but more importantly, knowing the important needs currently for, as stated earlier, the military family. So, I mean, you can see that collectively as cities around here, we do care about those that are serving and the predicament they're in, and we all want to contribute. But if you would like to bring some canned goods or whatever, please bring them to the Leighton Surf and Swim. There is a bin there already for you to drop these items off. And I personally think that with it being 250, it would be great if we collect at least 250 cans a week, if not more. So with that, I encourage all of our residents to help out. And certainly, if anybody's in the military that's in those type of situations and can't afford to take care of their living expenses, meaning the utilities and that, this is something that Leighton City has done over the past several years. It isn't new, but certainly let our folks know, and we will do what we can to work with you to make sure that we, you can keep your utilities on. So any other announcements that you guys have? We should have. We have one more announcement. What I'd do is encourage anyone who's here at City Hall, please read the poster out there as far as our interfaith concert. That's generally the Sunday...
Sunday before.
The Sunday before Thanksgiving, which is the 16th. And this year, it will be down at the New Western Sports Park in Farmington. So, and it's a free concert, and it's put on by the interfaith council that's certainly, you know, we've got the majority of the folks here within the city that will be performing. And for those that attend, a lot of the faith-based organizations that we have within our boundaries, but this year, the performance will be down there. So we encourage everyone to attend. And we'll also be doing a special nativity lighting scene the same night as our park. So we'll work collectively with that. With the changes, with the Leighton High School being under construction, you know, they've had to bounce around, but that's where they're at this year. Okay, I think that takes care of all of our municipal announcements. I'll now go on to our verbal petition or presentations. You do not see anything on the agenda, however, I'm going to exercise a point of privilege here and acknowledge the fact that the elections were just this week. And while I'm very excited to be able to continue to serve as a mayor, and I want to congratulate Councilmember Smith Edmondson, also on her winnings there as well, her election, but unfortunately, we're going to be losing one of our council members. And we'll do a special presentation as we get closer to the end of his term. But I recalled a comment that he had made back when we were having to deal with some of the tree removal that had to take place within our city. And he was pretty emotional about a tree that he had to remove in his yard that was a descendant from your grand, great-grandfather, the walnut tree, is that correct, Tyson? Okay, so Tyson, I remembered that. And being that I have one, I live in one of the historical homes that is part of that whole descendant, I have a black walnut tree that is very old, and I'm sure it was probably most likely older than yours. So I want you to know, I took the nuts, I planted the tree. We are now into the fall. This is the beginning of that tree, so you now have a new tree to plant in your yard that is a representation of that. And I felt like I needed to give it to you now because otherwise it would look like a toothpick, because just today, all of these leaves fell off. So I want to basically pass this on to Tyson so that he can plant it in his yard.
Thank you, Mayor. Didn't plan on getting emotional for a couple more weeks, but wow, that's incredible. Thank you. Means a lot.
At least you don't need a tractor.
Well, and I was surprised that I actually was able to nurture it and have that, grow that from a nut from that tree. So anyway, okay, we'll go ahead and go on to our citizens' comment portion of our meeting. This is the time that we'll turn it over to anyone who'd like to address this governing body. So if you'd like to, please come up to the podium here and state your name and just what city you're from, and then go ahead and let us know what you're thinking.
It's like I never leave. I would have loved to have been in the work meeting today, but I was down at the Department of, let's see, Utah Department of Natural Resources for that House Bill 48 meeting, which may the odds be in your favor. I don't think Leighton's going to have to deal with that too much. But that being said, it sounds like dog parks were on the agenda, which is why I would love to have been there. But it also sounds like maybe we're making a few steps in the right direction. So I'm just going to stand here and say thank you. Congratulations, Bettina. I voted for you. Congratulations, Joy, I voted for you. And I'm just thankful. I'm thankful for everybody that's on the city council that puts in the hours, because again, I've said this time and time again, I know it's a thankless job. And often, all you hear is the negative. So I'm thankful for the work that you put in, and I'm incredibly thankful for the steps we're taking forward on a potential dog park. So we appreciate you guys.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, but we didn't catch your name, even though you've been here many times. I need you to state it, your city.
Yes, ma'am. Jennifer Bizano, Leighton.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, is there anyone else?
I did get to attend the work meeting, and first of all, I was overwhelmed with everything you guys have to deal with and how hard you worked for us in that. So it would be really good for people to come to those work meetings, because it did make me appreciate everything you guys do. And congratulations, and congratulations, I did vote for both of you as well.
Thank you.
It was really exciting to see what you said about the dog park. Being the largest city in Leighton, it'd be nice to be able to not have to leave the city to take my dog to the dog park. And what you're proposing is beautiful, and I really appreciate the work you guys have put into it. So thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Terri Stevens, and I live in Leighton.
Thank you, Terri.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing that there's no other comments, then I'd like to go on to our consent items tonight. We have three items that are on the agenda, and as I always state, we do not need to vote on them independently, but we can vote on them collectively. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to Steve Jackson to deal with item number A.
Mayor, Council, it's good to be with you tonight. For your consideration is amendment number one of the interlocal cooperation agreement between Leighton City and Davis County for transportation project reimbursement. This project is for a traffic signal at Main Street at Front Runner Station. We've been working on that for quite a while, as you see the new development that's taking place at Leighton Station. And then also, Joellen and the Parks Department are working on a pedestrian overpass over the railroad tracks to the west. We've reached the end of the timeline on that agreement, and Davis County has graciously allowed us to extend that until March, or excuse me, June 30th of 2026. We anticipate it won't take that long to get this put in, but just wanted to formalize that in this amendment to that agreement. So staff recommends that council adopt Resolution 25-50 and authorize the mayor to execute this amendment to the agreement. Is there any questions I can answer for anybody?
Any questions, Council?
I will note, all of the underground improvements are in. It literally is just standing up the traffic signal as soon as we get authorization from UDOT and putting power to it. So it's almost there.
Yeah, no, I think that development's turned out very nicely for that area. Do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, will there be any special arrangement for pedestrians there, so that's going to be part of the trail system, or just a normal crosswalk?
It'll be a full crosswalk, but yeah, we're working with Joellen, and as soon as that pedestrian overpass goes in, we'll make sure we're evaluating those signal timings to make sure pedestrians have adequate time to get across.
But it'll just be a...
Yeah, it'll be a regular cross signal. All four intersection, or four legs of the intersection will have crosswalks at them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question. Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to item number B, which Mr. Jackson will go ahead and present that item as well.
Yes, thank you. For your consideration, Resolution 25-51 is a bid award to Institute Form Technologies. We do business with them as Twin D, the storm drain cleaning and televising project that we have. In the map here, it's the area west of Main Street, north of Gordon Avenue, areas 49 and 51 in the city. The project includes televising and cleaning the storm drain lines from anywhere from 12-inch to 48 inches in diameter, with the contract for this '25-'26 fiscal year with possible one-year extensions based on performance. We received three bids, with Twin D submitting the lowest responsive responsible bid in the amount of $153,174.88, with an engineer's estimate of $156,866.22. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 25-51 and award the bid to Twin D, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for the storm drain televising cleaning project 25-20. Any questions I can answer on that?
Any questions? Yes.
I don't, I just have one question. Maybe it's about process. Could you lay out briefly for us and also for the audience what the process is for getting bids in the city with different projects, specifically like this one?
Yeah, so we actually use a website called Quest CDN. Our staff in the engineering department prepares the bid documents for that. They prepare the maps. This is just one map in that document. Once the bid documents and the maps are prepared after the budget has been approved, then we post that to the website. Any contractors that would like to bid have access to the information. It's posted to the city's website and the Quest CDN. We give them a certain amount of time. It's very clear in the document and then on the website how they enter those bids. We have an electronic bidding process in engineering where we then open the bids electronically, click of a button, and it shows the bids. Then we read them aloud over a Zoom meeting so that we don't make everybody come in from wherever they are. We actually had some out-of-state bids this time. And then at that point, we process the paperwork, bring it to you as the council to award and approve, so. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Steve. We appreciate that. Let's go ahead and move on to item number C, and Weston Appoloni will be presenting this item to us, which is an amendment plat. Amended.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the Taggart Subdivision First Amendment Plat. It is located in an area that's surrounded by R-18 single-family and RM1, which is low medium residential. The property, just the quick and dirty of it, this red section here, you can see the fence line of the property. This is what we're doing. The property line is really just a, the adjustment here is adjusting to where the fence is, basically functioning how the property is already being used. On October 14th, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve the Taggart Subdivision First Amendment, subject to meeting all city requirements as outlined in staff memorandum. Staff supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Be happy to answer any questions you have on this.
The only question I have is knowing how close that roof line is to the boundary. Hopefully, it does meet our setbacks.
It does meet our setbacks.
Okay. Any questions, Council? Quick and easy. Thank you. Okay, Council, that then brings, that was our last item on our consent items, so it brings it back to you for action. If you could state the resolution number or the, what am I trying to say? What the information is? So item number C, state that one out.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-50, Resolution 25-51, and the amended plat for the Taggart Subdivision, first amended.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our consent items. We'll now move on to item number six, which is our public hearing. We have one item on the agenda at this time. So what we'll do is have, once again, Mr. Appoloni present this item to us, and then we'll bring it back to the council.
Thank you again, Mayor. During the 2025 Utah legislative session, Senate Bill 104 was passed, which amended the Municipal Land Use Development and Management Act, which is often referred to as LUDMA. This is the state's land use guidelines and requirements. What it did is revise terminology and processes for modifying property line boundaries and lot line adjustments. Our processes don't change based on what the state is asking us to do, just terminology changes. I'll go through those changes. And then as a part of this amendment, staff is making a recommendation for a minor change as well. The state is requesting three specific functions, three specific terms to be used. One is a boundary establishment. This is used when a boundary line joins a property and is ambiguous or uncertain, there potentially could be a dispute on the property line. This is to be worked out through the property owners and then recorded at the county. The city already addresses it and handles it this way. There's the simple boundary adjustments. This is used in either a subdivision or outside a subdivision where there are not public utility easements that are, that need to be vacated. This is reviewed and approved administratively, so they'd still have to submit an application. City staff would review it, make sure it does meet setbacks and any other standards that are required for it to meet, and then it could get recorded at the county. And then there's the full boundary adjustments. This is what we just reviewed just a couple minutes ago. It's an administrative process. When a full boundary comes through, the city requires it to be a plat amendment. That plat amendment vacates any existing utility easements and then reestablishes them with the plat. And then as well, a part of this, with the two motions that are tied to this, the second motion will be to remove the engineering and development guideline standards that are also regulating lot line adjustments, which, because they will all be in the municipal code instead. What you see here in front of you is the table that, in our municipal code, that outlines the reviewing body and the land use authority for these specific categories. One of the things that we identified as we were going through this is that vacating of plats and amending a plat is really the same process and kind of a hybrid process between the preliminary and the final plat process. When we, when we go through a preliminary plat, we are establishing property lines and establishing public utility easements. And we, when we vacate and amend the plat, we're doing the same process. And so the intent here is to match that procedure, and it's an administrative process. So although that hand was, or that was reviewed in the Planning Commission to begin with, staff's recommending that that goes back to the Planning Commission, that the city council doesn't have to review that. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Oh, actually, let me, let me just say, and I apologize for not saying this. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission. They do not review the engineering standards, and so they just reviewed the motion on Section 1801-070 and 1804, 1804-010, and 1832, which is the municipal code section. And they recommended unanimously to approve this. And then, again, the engineering section is reviewed and approved by the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Weston. Council, do you have any questions before we open it up for public comment? If not, I do need a motion to open up the public comment.
I guess I make a motion we open it up to public comment?
Okay.
Do we have to...
No, that's good.
Just move it combined?
Okay, so if there's anyone that wishes to come up and address us regarding the amendment that was presented to us and the change there on how, what the process is, please, once again, come up to the mic, state your name, what city you're from, and then express your opinion here. Okay, being that there's none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. Council, do you have any further discussion on this or questions? If so, please address it now. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing and take action on item number A of our public hearing.
It's a long one.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing, and we approve ordinances 25-22 and 25-23.
Excellent. And that was an excellent way to do that. Okay, it's been moved in second. I'll now go ahead and take a vote on this. Let's go ahead and start down here with Councilmember Roberts.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloxham.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith Edmondson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Okay, there you have it. It passes unanimously. And that is the last item on our agenda for this evening. However, we do have one, two items that we do need to go back into a closed-door meeting for, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn our regularly scheduled council meeting and go into a quick closed-door meeting.
I move we adjourn this meeting to go into a closed meeting.
Thank you. I'll acknowledge that. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and I hope you have a safe...
Wait, is there not a time for public comment?
Yeah, that was at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, okay. I just missed it.
You're welcome to come back next time, in two weeks.
Okay, in two weeks.
Okay.
This is the beginning of our...
Yeah, okay. And with that, I just, once again, want to encourage everyone to come out this Saturday to support our veterans and acknowledge our Veterans Day Parade at 11:11 with the program at 11:30, or 12:30 at the wall. So thank you.
Mayor, just real quick. The motion.
Been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you for the correction. Okay, thank you.